Everyone and welcome to the South Ward City Council Debate for Orange, New Jersey. My name is Veronica Scott and I will be the moderator for this debate. Tonight's debate has been organized by a coalition of organizations, including The Hub, University of Orange, Friends of Metcalf Park, Community Improvement Association of Oranges, and Planning the Set. These five organizations have been working together to provide candidate forums for elections in the city of Orange over the years and are proud to continue to do so. The forum protocol for tonight's debate is as follows. There will be two minutes for opening statements by each candidate, ninety seconds for each question, and a thirty-second closing statement. There will also be a warning when the candidate's time has expired. After that point, you would be muted. I will be calling out each of the candidates in alternating order. Comments that come into the event stream will be organized and shared by the candidates of our chat, by our chat moderators during the Q and A portion of the event. Finally, we're recording this forum and it will be posted on YouTube and Facebook. So next, again, welcome candidates. Next, we have our opening statements. Please remember that you have two minutes each for your statements. And I'll start with South Ward Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson. Your opening statement.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you to all of the groups that came together, especially Friends of Metcalf. I have lived in the city of Orange since nineteen seventy-nine. I continue to live in the home that I was raised in, so right now I'm in a multi-generational home with my parents, my husband, and my three sons. I'm Orange-educated. I have a bachelor's in education from William Patterson University and a master's in education and supervision from St. Peter's University. I've been an inner-city teacher for twenty-six years. In two thousand and fourteen, when I decided to run for councilwoman, it was because I was raising my kids here and I worked for the city as a youth and I just wanted some say in some of the things that were taking place. I wanted to make sure that South Ward was included in the changes that I wanted to see. The first thing that I did was put together South Ward community meetings so that the residents could sit across from and next to directors and ask questions and get answers because their interaction with the directors was limited. I've been working with Assemblywoman Timberlake after Ida just to make sure that the voice of Orange was being heard and that our voice is being heard on the county and state level. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll start with Mr. Linval James. Your opening statement?
You have to unmute. You're muted.
I'll give him a second. I think he's trying to get off of mute. I'll skip to Mr. James Ward since he's having some technical issues and then we'll circle back with Mr. Linval James.
I'm good to go?
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is James Ward. I'm running to be your next city councilperson here in the city of Orange Township, representing the South Ward, which is a diverse convergence of single and multifamily homes with two historic districts, a commercial corridor and light industrial legacy that add to the rich character and history of this place we call home. If elected, you'll have in me a compassionate, well-educated family man who is personally invested in the success of our combined communities. I have learned our area's history and I see the great possibilities for the future of Orange that meets the needs of our citizens through good planning, well-balanced budgeting, and a broad deployment of technology to get our city working smarter for the people of Orange Township. I will work to put our city's nearly ninety-million-dollar budget to work for all residents in the form of much-needed services while enacting numerous decades-long recommendations Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, CBAC, so as to ease taxpayer and tenant financial burdens. I have the vision for Orange that puts guardrails on developers and will seek to revitalize our city's institutions, including Orange, the Orange Public Library, the Recreation Center, and our city parks while fostering conditions for diverse and vibrant commercial corridors, helping our local dollars stay within our community. Vote James H. Ward III, line 2A, so that our Orange can live up to its possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see we have Mr. Linval James ready. Are you ready for your opening statement, sir?
Yeah. Yes. You hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine.
You're hearing me?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I want to thank you for the opportunity to have this debate. But I first have to thank God for the opportunity that he's given us because after the pandemic, we never knew that any of us could make it. So I, for the citizen of South Ward and Orange, I want to say, and many of us lose family members, but through the grace of God, we are here. My presentation is, when I moved to South Ward or moved to Orange, it was a beautiful city. It was a city I never believed I could live in, in nineteen eighty-three. And when I look on the South Ward now, it is really running down. I'm a clinical psychologist and also social worker. And when I look and see my community that I'm over forty years in community service, it really appalling to me to see why a small city and a ward can be torn down like this. So I know I work on two corporate boards in America. I have the ability to lead this community. I formed two national organizations in Jersey and started in Orange, the John J. Organization and Medical Mission. Presently, I am sitting in the organization office for the state of New Jersey. So I doing a lot of things for the community, especially farm in Orange. For the seniors, I give them, over the pandemic, I make sure they have something to eat. For the persons homeless, I make sure they are caught and stocked. We make sure we are also.
I'm sorry, Mr. James, your two-minute opening statement has concluded. We can circle back at the end if there's time. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Now, we have our questions. We'll start with the first one. The first question is on the theme of the role of council. What do you think is your biggest challenge facing Orange over the next two years? As a council member, what power and responsibility do you have to address that issue? And on this one, I'll start with Mr. James Ward. Your response?
The biggest challenges facing Orange right now is to rebuild trust in our government, making the place we call home affordable into the future. The role of government is to make our cities and states a more perfect union through the crafting of well-thought-out legislation devised through consensus building of our members of our governing body. The job of council is to continuously and fervently work together to enact the will of the people. As a council member, I will work to remove inefficiency from our town's processes utilizing lessons learned from corporate America. Many in the community have shared with me their struggles to receive basic permits to maintain their homes. One resident having needed a building permit to upgrade a failing boiler in the winter, taking many months to process. I encourage the use of digital processes to reduce the time it takes to get a basic permit so that no one is cold during the winter due to municipal inefficiency. Affordability is a big-ticket item for me and it should be noted that it was the catalyst to my personal involvement in the affairs of our town when, after only three months of living in our property, my taxes were raised by fifty-five percent. Overnight, my household went from joyous new homeowners expecting the birth of our second child to an uncertain future where we could not afford our new home. My wife and I found that we were not the only household experiencing this new unfound uncertainty and this was the beginning of my advocacy for the people of Orange.
Thank you so much for that response, Mr. Ward. Now, we'll have Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson, your response.
First, as a councilperson, my job is to legislate. And a lot of times it gets mixed up because it creeps into administrative or superintendent of schools and we control legislation and we control the budget. One of the challenges that I find within the next two years is parking and that is why the conversation of a parking authority has started and it went from a conversation to action. Towns normally create a parking authority when they receive way more cars, which is what we have, then we have spaces for them and it's creeping into the one-family homes, which is becoming a problem. Most apartments, back when they were built, people, maybe they didn't even have a car or they had one car. Now you might have two or three people in an apartment and everyone has a car and we don't have anywhere for them to park. Honestly, one of my biggest issues that I see creeping up is the lens in which Orange is described. There's this negative umbrella that I really want to remove because there is so much positive, positive things going on. When you talk to new residents, you ask them why they moved here and their why becomes my motivation. I would say creating a family environment is a struggle because you need programming, you need activities for the children and it can't all be at one time. I'm sorry?
Time. I, yeah, sorry about that, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry.
I'll have to move on to now Mr. Linval James.
Yes. What was the question again?
The theme is role of council. What do you think is the biggest challenge of facing Orange over the next two years? And as a council member, what power and responsibility do you have? I mean, you have to address that issue.
Yes, one of the biggest problems facing Orange at this time is our tax. We owe the tax. They schedule our scheduled taxes. It is really affecting our neighbors and our residents and our renters. One thing is that we have not having enough town hall meetings to discuss these things. Most of these decisions taken behind the table. So when it come before us as a community, commune or the South Ward, we already behind because this is an already made. I would like to see we come together as a community and as a council and to make sure we work together. For instance, I, in the corporate era and in cooperation with corporate, I have a lot of plans to help the homeowners to cut down on their taxes. For instance, the Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart, they promised me because I negotiate with them. I'm in the corporate. I know what I can do to represent the South Ward, to get people some relief, some people houses walk on the step when I'm campaigning and falling down.
I'm sorry, Mr. James, your time has concluded. Next, we'll have our second question. The theme is on development. The city of Orange is undergoing a lot of new developments. These new developments bring up a range of concerns for all Orange residents. Some of these concerns include affordability for residents and small businesses, use of condemnation, improving infrastructure and transparency, and resident participation in the planning of processes. Which of these issues do you think are most pressing? And what actions would you take as a council member to address them? I'll start with Mr. Linval James. Please remember you have ninety seconds to respond.
Yes, the housing is one of the biggest store we have in the city right now. We're building so much houses and we have no place to park. And when we finally have cars, we find out that people on the road speeding all over the place, looking for parking and creating a lot of damage, creating a lot of debt. I'm saying that as the councilperson sitting in the ward, what they have done over these years pertaining this correction about building and parking. I sit on the Public Works Committee for a couple of years and we discussed that, we presented to the council and not income of it. So what is going on is something that is oversight. We need to get together and look to see how can we improve our community? How can we improve the city of Orange and the South Ward? Because we were building, but we have nowhere to put the vehicle and we should be renovating at this point instead of building because a lot of these buildings is outdated and in disappear. We should be tearing them down and building on those property because those property have a lot of parking spot, which presently, these new building, they don't have it. So they need to plan better and the community need to be a part of the planning.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. James, for your response. Next, I'll start with Mr. James Ward. Your response?
All of these issues are quite pressing and are connected. The common theme is twofold. There's a lack of transparency and a lack of partnership. In my work as a commercial builder, I have prepared and participated in discussions with communities about what they would like to see come forth at the end of one of my proposed projects. Builders are often tasked by municipalities to provide opportunities for input on major works as a contingency for their approval. I have witnessed municipalities and local community organizations require developers to hire and purchase locally to improve open spaces, to update transit stations, and to directly fund community initiatives. This is the power of community benefits agreements by which a developer is compelled to meet the needs of a community as a condition to do work in that community. We must legislate pathways for community benefits agreements and business improvement districts to address the pressing needs of our community and how businesses can be the engine for positive change. It will not happen on its own. We have to legislate this. We must use these and other powers to increase resident participation in development and to improve the everyday lives of residents and small businesses in the city of Orange Township. Additionally, these efforts must be tracked and available on a single unified town website as to increase transparency.
Thank you for your response, Mr. Ward. And then finally, we have Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson. Your response?
I think one of the pressing issues with development is just the overall education to the residents because when you hear tax abatement or pilot, it's always in a negative. And actually, before I became a councilperson, maybe I felt the same way until it was explained that a piece of land might bring in sixty thousand in taxes. But then when we let someone develop on that land, it can bring in a pilot payment of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and also bring in jobs. We need a balance of affordable housing and market rate. Even though you'll have a group of residents that say, we have enough on the books, we have enough affordable housing. If you ask the average resident that, they're going to disagree. I think an influx of market rate is good. It's a good balance for the city. But again, the key is having someplace for them to park, making sure that landlords are following the code and making sure that code enforcement is enforcing the code. During the winter, we had residents paying their rent with no heat and no hot water and we had to bring in officials and they shouldn't have had to go through that. And that's why I started various South Ward Renters Association to bring lawyers that would represent our residents pro bono because, like I said, they were paying rent and they weren't receiving the services. So I think partnering and making sure that residents are on the planning board because there are residents on the planning board and they are a part of the planning and I think that that transparency is important. Community meetings, like I said, I had in the South Ward, is where those discussions can take place as well. So I definitely agree with the transparency. I definitely agree with asking residents what they want. We've brought out developers to meet and our lady of the valley with residents about development. Thank you.
Thank you for your response, Councilwoman. Our third question is on the theme of safety and health. Creating a safe and healthy environment for all of Orange residents requires ensuring that residents have sufficient access to food, stable and affordable shelter, employment training and opportunities, youth recreation and programming, and other necessary social services. What is your platform for creating such an environment? And again, I'll start with Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson.
Okay, so I'm going to talk fast because you said ninety seconds. Okay. So I would say for police, right? So with police, we need more community policing where residents actually know the name of the police officers and linking up with the neighborhood watchers that are still watching our neighborhoods. Once they can put a name to the officer, it makes everyone at ease. For recreation, I'm very happy that we have a lot of programs. Unfortunately, they are all running at the same time and I think that recreation should run year-round. I think the park should be open year-round. When I say open, I mean the bathrooms. From three to six after school, the parks can be a safe haven. Employees could work on a shifting schedule of twelve to six. There's no point in having them come in early in the morning and leave at four and then our programs are left with no workers. Swimming should be a year-round activity. For example, the South Orange Y does not have a pool, so they send everyone to the East Orange Y. We could definitely offer swimming and transport them to the East Orange Y. We used to do that with bowling and golf, so we could provide those programs that other towns had and our kids did not have to miss out and their money would stay here. A recreation calendar is essential for parents and residents to be able to plan. Job opportunities for Orange residents is a must. Older adults for the South Ward is tricky because we don't have South Ward older adult housing. We have South Ward residents that own their home and during the pandemic, I made sure that I went to the food bank, picked up food for them, for those that couldn't pick it up. And then there were some that were ashamed to go pick it up. And so I would say bringing that family environment and that can come through neighborhood watches, that can come through activities in a park, but I really believe that we need to open our parks up. We can't wait until the spring to say, oh, now we're going to have activities because those kids are out there year-round and they need direction and they need guidance because we don't want bored kids littering and messing up our parks. So if we do it year-round, we'll have a better effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we'll start with Mr. Linval James. Your response?
Yes, this Easter, I have over three hundred kids at my yard, most of them from Orange, doing the Easter egg. In the past, in the pandemic, just before pandemic cooldown, we have over four hundred seniors in my yard. We have medical discussion. We have feedback, what the seniors want, what we can do to make a difference from them. I have official come in and speak with them. For instance, one of the things, we have in sponge seminar that we talk to persons who miss out on the system, who cannot vote. We have lawyers who come and talk to them. We also, for health, we have health at the valley, at the church, and we have Bet Israel. We have with Caribbean Medical Mission, we have the Goma African Medical. We have a wonderful prostate forum. And we also have one that I set up in East Orange for mammal, for the ladies. So I'm active doing these things, become capable of doing these things. This is what I'm doing over forty years. I can bring the South Ward things that they never see before because I'm in the corporate. I know what is the system. I know Robert's rule to a book. I can, I can put my head to any one of these counselors about Robert's rules law to run a system or run a government.
Thank you so much for your response, Mr. James. And then finally, we have Mr. James Ward. Your response?
I want to begin my response by asking of our current councilperson, where was the legislation for any of that in the last four years? But I will digress to say that when we think about the security and safety of our underserved and most vulnerable neighbors, I not only think about the children and our elderly, but also think about our immigrants and disabled citizens. We can at times see them, not see them, and they might seem invisible. I recently met a young man in a wheelchair, unable to reasonably enter his own home. To the left, the utility pole blocks his sidewalk and to the right, he's forced to utilize his neighbor's driveway to enter and exit his own home. We're not meeting the needs of his and many others, basic needs of reasonable accommodation as defined by the nineteen ninety Americans with Disabilities Act. As a legislator, I will protect all who are at risk and will be a force to enact all available opportunities that benefit the people of Orange. Immediately after meeting this man, I contacted the city business administrator to inquire what could be done. So far, a crew has been sent to evaluate the situation and I continue to follow up as I have since first advocating for increased curb cuts throughout our city since the thirtieth anniversary of ADA signing in July of two thousand and twenty at a council meeting. This is a personal issue for me as I'm a father of two young children and I've been recently or often unable to push a stroller for a neighborhood walk. We must be proactive in meeting the needs of at-risk citizens in our community and I propose using technology to better catalog residents who have active handicap parking accommodations and to connect them with state and local services as well as ensuring basic accommodations are met by our municipality.
Thank you for your statement, Mr. Ward. And finally, we have closing statements. Please remember there's thirty seconds and the question is, what does Orange have to celebrate? I'll start with Mr. James Ward.
We have a beautiful and diverse community. It's changing more and more the demographics every day. We have a burgeoning arts district. We have extremely talented young people who are not being served by our community. They often have to go outside of our community to find programs or things to do. We have many candidates that talk about the things that they do and other places, the things that they've done in past times. What we need to talk about is real legislation. What we need to talk about is pushing forward to make our community better for the future.
Thank you for your response. And now we have Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson. Your response?
Okay, so we have thirty seconds to tell about what's great about Orange, what we have to celebrate. So let me do this fast. We have a blue-ribbon school in the South Ward Forestry School. So I want to kudos to Dr. Cook, the students and staff and parents. We have the highest amount of scholarships, twenty-four million between OHS and STEM. City residents, it's ninety-three on here. We are becoming civically minded. Residents are using their voices. When people look down and they see that our voting rates are increasing, that is something to celebrate. New development is making Orange more attractive. New residents are coming. Some homeowners want to downsize and enjoy some of the new development. So when I say what we have to celebrate, we have a lot to celebrate. And as far as recreation and activities, my kids have been participating since they were three in and out of the city of Orange, in and out. They currently play baseball and they play football since they were born. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your response. And finally, Mr. Linval James. Your response? Thirty seconds, sir.
I want to thank the police force because they do a wonderful job in pandemic and all the first responders. I want to thank them for most who combine their make it known that we could survive this pandemic at this time. There's a lot of things in Orange that is very good. The problem is that our leadership is the problem. We want better leadership. We want persons who know to reach to the low man from the wedding, the birthday, the barista. You want people can reach out to them and have a touch. the, with the barista, you want people can reach out to them and have a touch of the people. That is what's important. We need somebody who have that touch for the people. And I would have a meeting every two months in the ward, every two months to all male accountable. And I want to hear from the county. I want to hear from the neighbors, South Ward, what is happening. So every two months, I have in a meeting, I'm coming door to door.
Thank you for your response, Mr. James. I'm so sorry to cut you off, but I have to do the thirty-second, um, rule. Um, next, we have, um, some Q and A from the chat. Bear with me one second. We have some questions in reference to the potholes. Um, Valley Street is horrible and riddled with potholes. Um, I'm just gonna put that blanket statement out there. I don't know who wants to respond to the potholes issue first. Mr. Ward?
Um, I'll say that I've said many times before that we need to use technology to show people what's going on. Uh, a list of the streets that are being renovated or are to various levels has been published by the city, but they've not updated it. And in the business that I'm in, when we're building billion-dollar, uh, development projects, we have to show our work. We have to keep the, keep our clients updated. And doing so using technology is very basic in the year twenty twenty-two. Um, we need to be communicating these things to the populace and telling them when something's gonna happen. And if it, if the, if the date slides, people need to understand why that's happened and when they can expect their services to be met.
Thank you for that response. Does anyone else want to speak to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman. I think she were, she was gonna speak first, Jamie Summers Johnson.
You're muted. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The list for paving the streets, patching the streets is very frustrating. I normally do not go to a street with a letter with a date unless it has a date on it because I do not want to tell someone that we're gonna do their street and then we end up not doing it. I know my street was done in two thousand and ten, and I saw it on a list not too long after that. And I fought to get it removed because we had streets that weren't done. I have Tompkins where, you know, I mean, the streets are horrible. I will never take up for the, the process of how the streets are done. Some other roads are county roads, but the list changes so many times in meetings. We ask for a list, we ask for an updated list, we ask for residents to be, so that they can plan. Potholes are horrible. We know that. It tears up our cars. And this is definitely an issue. And again, I would never take up for the fact that I don't want a street patched up. You can't really patch up a pothole because then those little rock pebbles, those could, um, those could mess up. And, and as far as holding employees accountable, I see someone wrote that. You have to understand the, the council has certain powers, and then there's also the administration that runs the day-to-day operations. So just because you don't hear about it, doesn't mean emails were not sent, doesn't mean that we are not fighting, doesn't mean that we are not just as frustrated as you.
Thank you for that response. Uh, Mr. Limball James?
Yes, I believe the problem is with the council. I was sitting on the public works committee. And a lot of these contract that give out for the I don't know how to give the contract out because a lot of the roads, when they do it, it never properly finished. That be- before, uh, two months, a lot of them were packing up. All things was happening with the road. What I'm to the council people to demands the respect of our community to make sure we have the proper contractor to do the job. What we try to do, uh, very cheap. And we end up with many pothole after, after between one to two months. It's some of the roads start to sink, some start to get in all different shape. They have to continue on going over it again. Something is wrong. Management is the key to our city.
Thank you for your response, Mr. James. Uh, this question is, uh, targeted towards Mr. James. If not elected, um, can you still bring those programs to Orange that you talked about?
I am presently bringing all this program to Orange, but I believe that the council a lot member.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up here.
The legislation for many of those No, I didn't know. I, I see my community is going down, and I want to bring it back. Before I go, I want to bring back the West Ward. I want the West Ward to look like the West.
I'm sorry, it appears he's having some technical difficulties. Um, I am gonna put this question out. I'm not sure who's it's directed to, but if the city were to receive a large grant, how would, how would you, uh, like to see it spent in the city? I'll start with whomever wants to start. Um, Mr. Ward? Would you mind answering that question?
It depends on what the grant is. Uh, you just don't receive a grant for no reason. Um, usually it's tied to something, and what we need to do is make sure that we're adhering to that. And when we're talking about awarding contracts to build something or to put something in a place, we need to be doing proper government betting. I've seen on numerous occasions, uh, I've attended council meetings for the last three years, like just about every single one. And sometimes things are done by emergency appropriation, and that allows for, uh, the non-appropriate ways of appropriating funds. So you can emergency give funds to one contractor without going forth and getting three reasonable bids and leveling them. Uh, this is something that I've done, uh, in, in public and private works. This is good governance, and this is being a good steward of the people's money. Um, I would make sure that our money is properly spent. Uh, make sure that we've done our due diligence to make sure the contractors that are hired can do the work, that no one is being paid under the table improperly, which has been noted of being done before in, in our city and under the current administration. And we must work to change the perceptions of our city by just doing the basic good governments.
Thank you. Um, I have another question in the chat.
I wanted to answer about the
Sure, absolutely.
Well, um, currently, you know, I was really upset to find out that Valley Arts is not gonna be in the valley. Um, and that scares me because Valley Arts is, or Valley is known as the Valley Arts District, yet it's missing a lot of art. So if this grant, let's say in particular, was for, um, art, I know that I've been meeting with local artists to paint the underpass so that you know that you're going, it's just one that I see now that says Valley Arts, but going under. Um, provide benches, provide planters, uh, more little libraries, uh, our parks. Like, if it's for something like an open space, because I think what's missing is, for me, what's missing in the valley um, is the arts. So it's confusing to me how it's called the Valley Arts, and now Valley Arts is leaving, I think, Sunday or Saturday or Sunday. And they approached me to find a space for them, um, because they have to go. So that's frustrating because when you talk to some Valley residents, they don't even know about Valley Arts because Valley Arts is like two streets. So for me, I think arts along Scotland Road would make it more attractive. So I would say parks and arts right now for grants.
Okay, thank you so much for your response.
But real quick, I, I, I have to rebut real quick. I'm a member of the Board of Valley Arts. We are moving locations, but our programming has always been Orange-wide. Um, we will remain an active force in the city, but as you said, um, we are located currently on, uh, four hundred South Jefferson. And it, the, the art has not percolated throughout our community, and we're seeking to change that by changing our location. Uh, this has been forced upon us, uh, but Valley Arts will remain an active force within our community and specifically for the benefit of the Valley community.
Thank you for your rebuttal. Um, I have a separate question. I'm gonna direct this one to Jamie Summers Johnson, our Councilwoman. Uh, someone wrote, I would like to know why our budget process takes so long and the budget is spent even before it's approved. So we're always operating, uh, at a deficit.
So I would say we haven't started the budget hearings yet. We start asking for the budget as soon as the budget is approved. So I believe our budget was approved in August. We start asking for the directors. They submit their budgets to the BA. That is the frustration where people, for some reason, are not being held accountable for getting their budgets in on time because by now we should be done. And we have not started that process yet, but we can't approve a budget. We can't look at a budget that hasn't been given to us. So there are budget hearings that will be planned, um, and unfortunately, you're asking me a question that I cannot control. Um, we want the budget. We want to meet with the Citizens Budget Committee, um, and we want to listen to their recommendations. When they say the council doesn't take their recommendations, that's not true. Um, we're only the council when it's something negative. I want to hear from the Citizens Budget Committee. I want to hear what their recommendations are. And I respect them for giving their time and giving us recommendations. Um, it doesn't mean that they know more or less. Those are residents that just want to see their voice, um, with our budget. But that is, you know, our finance department. And again, this is something that we ask for through email. We do not hire and fire on a legislative, um, branch, and it is extremely frustrating to us that we don't have our budget yet. So I mean, if you want me to give you the most honest answer, that's the answer, that we do not have the budget right now. And that is why we have to, like you said, spend money before we even receive the budget.
Thank you for your response. Uh, one final question, and then I'll have, uh, I'll allow time for you to have final remarks. Um, Mr. Limball, uh, James, has he returned? I think he's still having some issues.
Yes.
Issues. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I didn't, I wasn't aware that you were back on the line. Do you have any response to any of the questions?
Yeah. Uh, I didn't hear the question because I get hit off.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll pose a separate question if, if you'd like. Um, may or may not be applicable to you, but, um, question for all of the candidates, uh, with these new developments going on, where do you see fit to place a new school? Uh, because we definitely are going to need one. I'll start with you, Mr. James, since you were the last, uh, to come back on.
Yes. Yeah, I, I believe that who would put and they're going around and map out the town, the location and the availability of space. So I couldn't really tell you from a scientific section what is the best area. Cause we have to careful because the South Ward more with was residential, so get about the South Ward. So I would be biased in saying thing. We have to leave it to the town planner to come up. And we can cost it when they come up their ideas. But so far, my concern is not even that. My concern is the tea on the, the board of education. We need to work closer. The city and the board of education is too far apart. It's a mess. I want to use the auditorium of your problem. You want to use certain school to get the kids off the road, to give them a good background. I have play. Board of Education. Uh, that is big bubble going on.
Thank you.
We need to do something there to make sure that our kids can come off the street and go into the library and do some research.
Thank you for your response. Uh, Mr. James Ward, you had your hand up.
Uh, if, if I, if I had the choice, uh, I would say, uh, as an architect and a builder, the Orange Memorial Hospital site is prime for development. There's been a lot of talk about what to do there. Um, I actually detailed a plan for this and in a recent interview that I did. But, um, we really need to bring in some big-money developers, uh, Manhattan developers, uh, international developers, people that understand how to build on historic sites that preserve what's there, but add, um, something that, uh, that could be a multifaceted commercial residential, uh, mid-rise, high-rise and low-rise, uh, public-private partnership. Um, I did a project like this at Hudson Yards in Manhattan. Uh, it's a, uh, seven billion dollar project, uh, that we, that we built. Um, and in, in that development, which is largely extraordinarily expensive, uh, non-market rate buildings, but they did have to put a school there. And that school was required to be a part of that development because of community benefits agreements. That's what the community asked for in the Hell's Kitchen area. Uh, it was needed because New York City desperately needs more schools. Uh, and the, the, the community that, that was charged to come together, uh, that was a part of the planning process because it was built into the development process by the City of New York, uh, said that that was what they wanted, and that's what they're gonna get.
Thank you for your response. Uh, Councilwoman, do you have a response?
So I'm, I'm confused. Is the que- you're asking where, with all the new development, where would we build a new school is what the question was, right? So first and foremost, there is like rumors going around that the schools are overcrowded. So my first concern would be to check with the superintendent and check with the schools to see if that's possible, I mean, see if that's so. Because my kids attend Orange Public Schools and I teach in Newark. So when we talk about overcrowding, you talk about right now with a lot of the kids at Haywood, it's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen kids in a class. So first, we would have to see if it is necessary because what you, what we also need to understand is with another school means more teachers. And right now, currently, I'm not sure if Orange teachers are, their salaries are even equal to the surrounding areas. So when you think about building a new school, you think about who's gonna teach them, who's gonna pay them. And I'm not sure in the South Ward where a school could go. There might be areas in the valley. But right now, the kids for gifted and talented, they get bused to, uh, Scholars Academy, so they're getting it. I'm just not sure if building a new school is something that we need. I think that we would first have to see if it is a need, just because we have new development, doesn't mean that our schools are overcrowded. I just think we need to be clear about that because that's something that's said to me all the time. The schools are overcrowded. I'm like, okay, how? Like, show me proof. Because if my son is in the sixth grade and has fifteen to sixteen kids in a class, that's ideal. That's not overcrowded. So we just need to make sure that we would be able to pay these teachers the salary they deserve if we opened up a new school.
Okay. Thank you for your response. And my final question before we wrap. Very quickly.
Um, as a fellow educator, I, I'm a teacher on the college level at Columbia University. Um, we all know that smaller classroom sizes, uh, lead to better results. And the co-located middle school, high school is not a good situation. We are forced in this situation because those are the only buildings that we have. Uh, if we were to make our middle school or high school in a separate location and have smaller classrooms because you could use the existing space and the new space, we would see, uh, better levels of achievement. Just because smaller studies show that smaller classroom sizes always are better. I will also say that my children attend, uh, our, our public schools. And from what I've seen, they are not overcrowded. But, uh, in European countries and countries that, that are extremely well-funded, smaller classroom sizes always equal higher achievement.
Thank you for your response. And the final question before we begin to wrap for everyone is how would you hold developers accountable to ensure that they're acting in the best interests of the town and residents? And, and not just profit, uh, from the bottom line? And just profit and the bottom line. Think this question is worded a little, uh, wonky.
I'll take that one because this is something that I've talked about many times. Uh, I'm not gonna ring the, the bell again on community benefits agreements. I think most people understand that now that I've explained it. Um, that does hold people accountable, um, but what we also need to do is develop a Um, but what we also need to do is develop a com- comprehensive set of building design standards. I've said this at multiple council meetings, basically after every time something has been proposed and we don't get what we want. Because when you, when you put forth legislation that allows for um, the community to say, we want this to look like this. That's how the communities around us look the way they do because it's mandated. Our, I, I was at a, a planning board meeting for a project that was happening here in the south ward. And I said, why can't we make it look this way? Why can't we address the ground floor so that it's appropriate for uh, pedestrians as they walk by? Why can't we have ground floor retail so that we're adding to the taxable base of our city? And they said, well, we can do whatever we want because your town does not have building design standards. And that's when it became uh, one of my mantras that I say very, very regularly to city council and nothing has been done. This is very simple. Um, we need a comprehensive set of building design standards so that we can get what we want from these developers and it's mandated. They have to do it.
Thank you for your response. Uh, Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes, um, first and foremost, I think that first I asked about that question, um, we do have standards. Um, and sometimes it's easy to say stuff because we assume people won't.
No, that's your talk.
They're not back and forth, right? You said not back and forth, right? Okay. Um, we do have standards and also the, for example, the PSCNG meeting, that was citizens. That wasn't anything that anyone needs to uh, take credit for by themselves. I think that was an awesome show of community. I always say when people do petitions and things like that, it's better than one voice when the community comes together. So I looked at that as a positive thing. I don't think that's anything that any one person um, should take credit for. I'm very happy that I sat in on those meetings. I, we were able to hear uh, what the residents wanted. I visited Hoboken and things like that. I just think that we have to get away from the I, I, I and get more into the we. And like I said, residents giving their opinions, we may not always wanna hear, not, not, I don't wanna say don't wanna hear it, but we may not like hearing the negative all the time, but in it, as long as we're sitting together and working together, those meetings were productive. I felt they were productive. Um, but that meeting, that PSCNG meeting, for example, that went before the planning board and a lot of residents were mixed up. Someone was telling them, contact your councilperson, and I'm saying, there's a planning board. It has to go before the planning board. So a lot of residents didn't even know there was a planning board or that they can sit in on these meetings. We don't have to be reactive. We don't have to wait until something happens and then come together. We can come together all the time or before things are done. Um, I just don't wanna look at it in that anyone's trying to do anything behind closed doors and, and um, in the dark or any, I always wanna do things upfront because I wanna be able to say that the community wanted this. It's not what I wanted. So um, when you talk about cannabis, for example, the community said they wanted it, we needed it. You look all over the news, you see everyone um, excited about it and the city of Orange, now we're in court for it. You know, we're gonna get it because we're gonna win, but it shouldn't have had to go to that extreme where we're not reaping from that revenue. So residents coming to these meetings and residents saying what they want is what I wanna promote and I don't ever want a resident to feel like they can't come, but the planning board meeting meets monthly. They can go at any time and let their voice be heard.
Thank you for your response. Um, Mister Limbaugh. I, I'm sorry, Mister Ward, I'm gonna have to cut you off. I have to let Mister uh, James respond. Do you have a response?
Yeah, yes. What happened is that I believe we are, most of the time we should be short-sighted because we supposed to be having certain amount of town meetings with presentations. Especially the young people with technology, they draw architectural work and present to, and to present it to the city. And we look on it and vote upon some of these things, then we have discussion about it. For instance, I am working presently on the Orange Park to get lots of Orange Park because there's a lot of kids on the road. They could play in some game, but they're all light at certain times. We realize that the neighborhood would feel a little disturbed, but no, we have time. Oh, but right now, all the playing fields in in our areas, Essex County, they are lights. They have nothing. I am working to the verse it now with Mister, I should read them myself, been manager seat now to make sure we can put light on that field. So is it very important? Another area is very new sports to the area. In Orange Park, no America decide move Cricket International. No, we in Orange Park start a high level of cricket that cricket is the world cricket to uh, play now. Orange Park is a mess. We need to do
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you, Mister James. I think that you're at time.
I mean, I'm
Can I comment?
Make sure we get this space on this bunch of
Mister James, thank you for your response. You're at time. Um, I'll, I'll allow rebuttal just on this one question. Um, I'll start with uh, Councilwoman Summers Johnson and then Mister Ward.
I just wanted to speak on Orange Park. If you see the beautification that you see in the front, that was three years of meetings that we had to, to make sure that that was done. That was yelling and screaming to get those plants because Orange Park was the place where people came to take their wedding pictures. It was a beautiful place. And because honestly, I feel we weren't saying anything, they thought they could just put whatever they wanted there. But when we started involving the community and letting our representative that comes to the, to the council meetings from the county, let him know we got trees cut down and things like that. You talk about the lighting with the soccer. I'm not sure how that's gonna work because the residents in that area have contacted me on numerous occasions because soccer is starting to begin at like five o'clock and six o'clock in the morning and they do not want the lights on. So it's something that you definitely want to collaborate with the community because as much as we want the people to come here and play soccer, some people just wanna come home after work and go to bed. They don't want all that activity throughout the night. So that is a county park. That is not our park, but we do work in collaboration with the county. But as far as the beautification, that's not Jamie Summers Johnson. That's Jamie Summers Johnson and council members working with our county representatives to make sure that Orange Park had that. Now, I'm still not happy. I want our park to look like the park in Bloomfield that our special needs um, population can go to. And that's something that I've been working with Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Timberlake on. I just don't want people to think we're satisfied with it, but we have to look at some of the positive strides. We're not where we need to be, but I'm just happy that there is some beautification because that part of it is right in the south ward and it's where East Orange and Orange meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Ward, your response?
I would say that uh, I appreciate the work of our city council members around the PSCNG issue that they allowed for there to be a community discussion. But I would say that um, it came in the wrong time. Uh, as a designer, uh, when you design a facility like that or of any scale, it takes many months, sometimes years in, in the making for planning. And where the, the people came in was at the very end of the process. Um, that is not a time when you put in forth uh, the, the input from community. Um, we did not get what we wanted out of that. The biggest issue out of the PSCNG issue that was uh, that, that's gonna be built actually right next door to the location where Valley Arts is at four hundred South Jefferson uh, was the wall. We, no one wanted a fifty-foot wall. And what are we gonna get? We're gonna get a fifty-foot wall that simulates a building. The issues were not addressed at all. Um, no one in the community was, was happy with the result of that. And it's because it came too late in the design process. They, they gave us a chamfered edge that's gonna be uh, maybe some artwork that's unserviceable because of overhead wires. Uh, I had personal discussions with uh, the, the, the designers of the PSCNG project. I walked the site myself. Uh, I appreciated that we had the opportunity, but again, as a designer, when I'm working on something, um, you come at that process way at the end, nothing can be done. And that's why nothing was really done for the people.
Um, Mister Ward, thank you for your response. We're currently at time. Um, hopefully we won't get cut off, but I do wanna give you all the opportunity to have a final closing statement. I'll start with Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson.
Greetings all. I, I'm very happy that I attended this uh, forum. Anytime that we are having these conversations, it's good. We are not gonna always agree. Um, but we will be working together. Um, as far as the council, uh, we definitely need to work together for the people. And I am willing to fight. That's why I'm still fighting for cannabis. That was something near and dear to my heart because the people voted for it. And I don't ever wanna go against what the people want. Over seventy percent of the town said that they wanted it. Um, the south ward is on the move. There's a lot of development coming to Scotland Road. I myself and Councilwoman Wooten have been meeting on Scotland Road to try to change the look and hold our code enforcement officers accountable, making sure stores have the correct uh, signage and that they're, um, they don't have all their windows covered. It's a process. Um, I've been here, I'm trying, I'm working hard. I will never stop fighting for my city. I will never stop fighting for my parents who are older ducks, for my college son, for my children that attend Haywood Avenue School. I have it all in one house. I love my city. I'm gonna always promote what I can that is positive about it. I'm gonna guard it like my family. And I'm gonna continue to fight to make sure that the voices of the south ward are heard on the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your response. Mister Limbaugh, James, do you have any final statements, comments?
Yes, yes. I want to say that we need our roads to more safe. Uh, the three months is a very dangerous road speed. We need to do something with three months. It would, we need to do something with it. The speeding is too bad, is no good. We need something with that and the long time this thing is happening. Inside down the valley, the, the, the roads is, is a disgrace. We need to work on those projects. There's some residents who, who when they bought their house, they bought the house and they have one car, but the family they developed. And now they have two cars. We need to do some permit towards those that we can have a peaceful transition than having this fighting. But most of all, what is happening? Oversight, we have people from out of town, East Orange and these places coming into the city, parking their cars and let this thing overcome. So we have to look into these things. Do to, because they come in from other towns and parking their car. Somebody pick them up and carry them back in the morning. They pick them up, drop them off, they take the car. We gotta do something. I noticed the garbage is so bad. I watch a lot of mornings when I walk in. I walk in and I see garbage at the same place for six months, walking. And I just see the same garbage at the same place for six months. What is going on? The garbage, the garbage shop come and when they come, I don't know what is going on. They take some and leave some. We gotta do better.
Thank you for your response, uh, Mister James. And finally, Mister Ward, your final response?
A vote for James Ward is a vote for action, um, a vote for legislation. Um, you can see this in the works that I've done in the short period of time that I've lived in the city of Orange. Um, from the formation of our largest active community crime watch organization encompassing twenty blocks, two hundred fifty-three registered members. Um, I've personally and with the, with the work of Seven Oak Society members, we've increased the civic engagement in our town. Um, I've increased access of relevant information on a website dedicated to the south ward at sevenoaksociety.com. Um, I've increased um, the access to information because I think that it's important that we're we're unified, but I also think that it's important that we're informed on what's happening in our town. Um, my time period here has been short, but I will say that I've been effective in knowing the right people and understanding how to turn the levers of power. This is part of how I was raised. Um, coming from a family of elected officials, coming from a family of a two-generation business that does federal government contracting, I understand how to turn the levers of power. Uh, if you see my resume, you see um, a lot of work for somebody who is thirty-five years of age. And that's because I work fervently for the, the things that I care about and I care about this city. Uh, I care about this place because I've set down roots here and I intend on making a difference. Uh, I look forward to earning your votes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your response. I wanna say thank you to all of the candidates um, for sharing your ideas with all of us. For everyone who joined the call this evening, thank you for your concern for Orange. Please remember to exercise your right to vote on May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, please join us tomorrow evening at seven PM for the East Ward Council debate. And then thank you to everyone. Good night. Have a good night.
Night.
That concludes our debate for this evening.
I'm gonna go to the later.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, interpreters. Excellent job.
Thank you for having us.